Good evening.
Good evening.
Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Evens. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, call the roll.
Rhodes? Rhodes? Here. Spinks? Here. Coche? Mezek? Here. Janutus? Louhardi? Saunders?
Here.
I have a motion to excuse Constable Janutus by Spinks, second by Louhardi. Call the roll.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of June 4th, 2018. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, have motion for acceptance by Mezek, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 4th, 2018. Any corrections for those? Seeing none, and motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Louhardi. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
We have no presentations tonight. Full business. Ordinance number 9613-18.
Amending ordinance number 7819-06 entitled, well, section 191307 entitled Minimum Design Requirements for Residential or Commercial Buildings and Structures and Related Parking Lots, Drives, Walks, Equipment, and Appertunances, declaring emergency.
Do I have, we would like to put that on second reading. Motion for such. Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thanks, Mayor. Took a handful of items here. Just a friendly reminder, this last week we do our July 4th parade, and that will start at the hospital parking lot and go into Bedford Heights. As far as our police department, we're making progress. We are down to reviewing applicants for our last officer to get up to fully staffed. Last week, one of our second officers that we hired finished the academy, so he came back and he is now going through the training with our current officers. So we were getting very, very close, and we anticipate making a conditional offer for that third extra officer, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We are, our bike patrol, due to the increased staffing, we've been able to get our bike patrol out at some of the events. Bike patrol's been downtown, throughout some parks, as well as our motorcycle unit. That is back out. We are working to increase our patrols, you know, obviously try to assist with some of that quality of life items, the speeding, the running of stop signs, the illegal parking. So, a presence is a big thing, especially during the summer months, and we are working to increase that. We did get, regarding CDBG grant, we have unfortunate news. We put in for an application to, you know, we really felt that we would have a high application as far as the scoring goes with the investment to the Allenwood Center. We put in an application to repave a portion of Allenwood and Kenyon. We actually missed out by funding by three points. So, we are not funded for this year. However, if, under a circumstance where one of the applicants above us is not able to follow through with their project, we'll be next on the list. So unfortunately, those two streets are not going to be repaved at this stage of the game. We will keep this posted. Our BCDC grant, you know, we've reached out to all of the local businesses in the Broadway corridor. We received a handful of applicants already, applications, I should say, already for some storefront improvements, for some signage. I think the total amount for projects, or I should say, request for reimbursement for projects is about half. We still have about another $20,000, $25,000 to spend, and we'll be making a follow-up to some of those local businesses to, you know, encourage them to get those applications in. Obviously, due to the weather and the high heat, there's always the chance of power outages. There's many things, as we've witnessed today. We did put something on our website, and we sent some stuff out on social media. We received notification last week. It was a good, good piece of information from FirstEnergy, helpful tips, some of the steps to take if you're experiencing some issues. So I encourage everyone, especially during these hot summer days, to, you know, if you didn't read through that, it's, there's some helpful information on there if you get a chance. We are working with, also on our website, and we are getting it out with some volunteers. Our welcome packet that was redesigned, if you get a chance, go to our website. We are distributing that to all of the new residents, and we get that information through new water accounts that come over. But if you're an existing resident and you're interested in a copy, give us a call, or if you go to our website, there's an area where you can find it under the residence section. It's a very, very good piece that our staff worked to put together, very informative information, and very helpful as well. I do want to take a minute and commend Consul, and John, and Frank. The city worked for probably well over a year in working through a deal for our landfill. If everybody remembers, we had a landfill that we had owned in Walton Hills. We pretty much brokered a deal to lease that facility. The lease fell through, we kind of took a step back. We were able to find a buyer, and we closed about two, two and a half weeks ago on that property. We sold it for roughly $600,000. That property was appraised at $270,000. So, well done, Frank, John, Consul, it's good work there. And I think that's all I have.
A question on the Good Neighbor booklet. You gonna maybe go back a few months and give it to new people, or?
We, we went back and we pulled all of the May new residents, and then now, we just got the report for June. I think there was maybe 30 or 40 in May, there's another 30, 38, I can't remember. Somewhere.
We're only delivering to households that we know are households. The report from May, about half of them were LCs, were obvious investment, and the other half were residents, so.
I just thought we'd go back a little bit and catch some of those.
Sure. One of the pieces that, for those of you that may remember, is probably about a decade ago, we used to put something out called the Good Neighbor Guide, and we are actually working to redesign that right now. And it'll fall online with that welcome packet. So, a lot of information that we want to get to our new residents, but also get to existing residents, resources, you know, a bunch of information, get out. So we are, we're working to redesign that as we speak.
Thank you. Mr. Law Director.
I'll just briefly, Michael deserves some gratitude too for that. He ladies are very active in selling our, so we, I pro. And I just want to wish you all a happy and safe holiday. Great work.
Thank you. Mr. Finance Director.
Yeah, I have announced that the 2016 CAFR, which is our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, not only won its award for excellence in financial reporting from the finance department, I must say so ourselves, the management staff. Not only was it getting the award, again, a 27th consecutive award, but it also came with no comment, which is pretty much unheard of. I mean, it was very, very good and well-received. So, kudos for all those who assisted us in getting that together, as well as what we did this year. We've applied again for a 28th award, as well as I want to thank Consul and all the members of the administration, my staff especially, they did a great job in helping us put that together. And I will say that even our auditors have met some of those in the state of Ohio. So, job well done, putting our reporting together on a very high level.
Well, that's, not to interrupt you, but that's excellent. I want to thank you and Jen, and I think that does, that's a huge deal to get that. It's not just an award that everybody gets.
I'd say 5% of all entities in the United States and Canada get that award. So I mean, just then not to have no comments is even more rare.
Oh, yeah. And 27 in a row is astounding.
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's something that we've been able to accomplish, and I appreciate Consul's support, I really do. Thank you. Did you know my report?
Oh, okay. No, good job, good job.
You're going for 35, right Frank? 35.
35. I already have like 33.
Council reports. Ms. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone. How are you this evening? Thank you for coming. I wanted to start out, since Mike touched on the welcome packet, I was helping with the group that's delivering the welcome packets. We had our first, we, we got our first batch out about a week ago, and we're going to be picking up the next batch. If anybody's interested in helping out with the welcome packet delivery, please let me know. We're still trying to figure out logistics of how we get these packets out. I know that the ladies have also taken a few businesses are interested in getting their information in. If you are interested in getting your businesses' information in the welcome packet, please let me know, and I'll get you that contact information. I'm very pleased to tell everyone that the Historical Society has a new website, which went up this past week. It puts them in modern standards for websites, much easier to use. You can actually see it on your cellphone and your tablets. And over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be upgrading that site so that they can take online donations and have a better ability to promote some of their events that they have there, the Historical Society. The Bedford Downtown Alliance had an event this past week. We did a Broadway cleanup. It was also sponsored by Andy's Dog House. They provided free hot dogs for anyone that participated. We had a pretty good turnout. We got lots and lots of trash picked up off of the Broadway stretch, particularly cigarette butts. So if you're a smoker, do not throw them on the property, please. So we had a very nice time there. I just got information yesterday, the DART assessment will be coming back, hopefully July 13th, we're tentatively looking at, to give their report on what they feel we can improve in our downtown area, and what steps we can do to work towards that. We just completed our June Bedford Challenge, and the Bedford Challenge is, if you give two hours of time to improve the community of Bedford, you receive a little treat. The June participants will be receiving a free 16-ounce bubble tea or bubble lemonade from the Apothecary, the coffee shop there. Concoctions, yes, thank you, drew blank there for a minute. And the July Bedford Challenge will be the same. Give two hours of volunteer time to better improve our community. Let me know, I'll put you on the list, and you'll be eligible for July's treat. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
And, and thank you for that, Heather. I got some good reports back on the cleanup. People were happy to see it being done. Good job, and all the people that helped. Oh, Mrs. Spinks?
Yeah, I want to say thank you. Because it was so nice to go in town Saturday to the farmer's market, and I love to see the shirts there. There's a couple of guys that had shirts on, a green, bright green shirts that says, "I hate trash."
They're hoping to have, they're going to be doing it once a month, and they're also going to have shirt, t-shirts for everybody next time, so.
That's really cool, and thank you for doing that, because it's much needed. I did hear remarks as I was at the farmer's market by people saying, "There's no trash on the square." And I said, "That's because we have Billy." Our downtown area does look really nice, and that's much appreciated by doing that. And thanks for all that you're doing in the downtown area, it was much needed. Mike, is there anything, the biggest complaint, of course, with it being summertime, people were moving out, and during the week days, trash picks up in my ward on Wednesdays. Friday, come Friday, there's furnitures and refrigerators, and so you have to look at that stuff, the poor residents, all weekend long, all the way until Wednesday. And right now, I have their cell addresses that I don't know, what can we possibly do? Because a lot of them, if they don't get water bills, we can't really put it on the water bill. There has to be something, because it's just so, it's such an eyesore.
Anytime, obviously during the day, if it's a Friday, or if it goes out earlier, you know, contact us, you know, we'll reach out to them. But if it's on after hours, or in the weekend, you can contact dispatch, PD will stop out there. We've done that a couple of times already.
Yeah, it's, it's very aggravating to see that. Just wish everybody a happy 4th of July, stay cool. Remember, check on your, if you have elderly neighbors, check on them with the heat, because I know some of my senior buddies, they don't like your condition, and it's really, really hot. So if it's 90-something outside, it's 100-something inside. So check on your neighbors, and be calm, and have a happy 4th of July. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mezek?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I have a compliment to our city, and to you, and to any, everybody that's involved. There was a group, a professional group of bikers that came to come through the mental parks, and they come through, and they have a trailer and everything that hauls their bikes, and others put them in their cars. They said that our parkway, that connects from here to the park, or through the park, is one of the best bike paths, they, which are written on, and they, and they've come back here several times. And then the other thing was the little brochure from Kimball to inform people what they could put in their trash, and what they can put in the recyclables. I think that was a good idea, that was sent out.
That water bill?
That was sent out in the bill, yeah.
Yeah, that actually, I'm, we put that together, that was paid for through the recycle grant, that also paid for Friday, so you're right, very good information.
And I want to thank Mary, who's sitting in the audience. She is the president of our Senior Citizens Group at Allenwood, that meets when Allenwood's back up to speed every month, like, every third Wednesday of the month. We had our annual senior picnic there anyhow, because it rained, and of course, you don't see people for a long time because of the long winter. I know a lot of this was discussed in the back room, but I have to refresh our city manager's memory. We are requesting, and this was several people from my area, they'd like to have the police more visible in the area. I know that one of our new officers does manage to wave to some of the residents, which is really a nice effort on his part. They, they like to see that more often, more officers come through or off the auxiliary, just to know that their, their street counts, that they count as residents, that they have somebody that's going to be there for them. Also, the same thing with the dog warden, even if he just goes through, because there's always somebody that lets their dog out the front door and goes somewhere else and take care of business. So, that was another request. Followed up by, we had the first round of grass cutting, but there's still people on violations that they don't really give a damn about their property, and I'm assuming these are rentals, but I'm not sure, so I didn't go into too much. Because the gentleman that I talked with, was, has lived in Bedford almost 53 years, just as long as the rest of us, and he was a little disappointed. He said, "Need I say anymore?" And I just looked at him, and I says, "Take care of it." We discussed the curbs in the roads, on Green Cliff, they're kind of, there's a rolling curb there, so like, some of the streets are getting sunk, but I had to find out which sort of road was sinking down before I can go into that one. And then also, we've mentioned vacant homes and vacant buildings, and if we would be starting to find, if we would start finding these owners. And, you know, the list can go on and on. Yep. Well, here's the thought for today. It is now July the 2nd, and we are at the midpoint of the calendar year. That means we're in the 183rd day of this year, and there's only 177 more shopping days till Christmas. All right, 182 days remaining until the end of the year, and the reason being, only 183 days before, and 182 after, except for a leap year. So right now, we're at the halfway point of our calendar. And the other thing is, tonight your prayers, or later on, if you do pray, just add an extra prayer for the officer that's day later, I say, for men. He's a good guy, I'll tell you that now. He's a better officer. I've been to several police and fire memorials, and they're very touching. And I want to wish you all a safe and a happy 4th of July. Enjoy your day with your family and friends, and especially enjoy our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Louhardi?
Thanks, Mayor. One thing that I want to bring up, not only ahead of 4th of July to everybody, but also, don't forget, we got a lot of fireworks that are going to be flying pretty soon, if not already. You know, my neighborhood, they're going off like crazy already. Call the dispatch, call the emergency 911, just call 232-1234 and report it, because sometimes they get out of hand, and I think it's getting worse every year. So it's something we need to control as much as we can, so don't be afraid to call and report it, so we can keep it under control. Other than that, I'd like to see everybody to parade, and that's it, my report today.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders?
Yes, I got one question first, on that same link for our law director. Is the new state law taking effect this week that allows you to blast off fireworks? You know for sure, or? I thought it was July 6th that it takes into effect. They waited until after the 4th. I'm not certain, to be honest. Because they passed that regulation, was back in the winter sometime, that was kind of ridiculous, you can buy them, you couldn't blow them off, so they passed it where they can blow them off again. Now, hopefully, there's a restriction on size of those fireworks, because I had a neighbor that was blowing off 400 shells a few months ago, and those are regular fireworks for display, but can, can you possibly check into that, because?
I'll send you an email tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much on that one. The other thing being is parties that people are having in the neighborhoods. They're getting to be rather excessive, that they're parking up streets, right into the intersections. There were two in my neighborhood this weekend that you couldn't find a parking spot, in fact, if an ambulance had to come down the street, they couldn't make the turns, especially at Ennis and Logan. Noise is getting to be rather excessive on some of these parties. When you can hear them three blocks away, you know they're too loud. So, and I hate to say it, but calling dispatch doesn't seem to do any good. But we need to inform people somehow, whether it's in our water bills, or whatever it is in our information section, that if you're going to have a party, you have to park 30 feet from an intersection, and that's around radius, not from the corner. We have problems with that. We have a lot of senior citizens, especially in my neighborhood, that are rather old. They're in their 90s or above, so, you know, there, you have to keep these streets clean. And noise, of course, let's face it, not everybody likes to hear certain types of music at high volumes. Yeah, so. But in any case, we need to put something in there about being a responsible citizen when you're having a party. So, if you could look into that, Mike, that would help. Just as a quick reminder, there is no party in the park this Wednesday on the square. It's 4th of July. It'll resume the following week, so hope to see everybody at those for the rest of the summer. And then of course, happy 4th of July for everybody, have a safe holiday. Hopefully, we'll see all of you along Columbus Road. Parade starts at 10 o'clock. I think all of us here are in it, so go out and bring your little bag for some goodies as they get tossed out to you. As they ta, I know, my vehicle will toss them out to everybody, so not just the kids. It's not just a kids' event, it's a big event for everybody. It's one of the largest parades in Cuyahoga County for the 4th of July. So happy 4th, everybody. Enjoy the holiday, some fortunates in the middle of the week, so you don't get an extended weekend unless you're retired. Looks like most people here probably are retired, so. It's weekend every day, but have a safe 4th of July.
Thank you. Yeah, also, you know, I've been noticing so much trash being thrown on the road lately, it just becomes more, more noticeable, especially, you know, fast food bags, and, I don't know. Not a lot we can do about it unless we catch somebody, or an officer catches them in the air, but just throwing the trash out is, is terrible. It's looking, you know, it kind of peaks. Sometimes we get a lot of trash, and then it goes away, and then it, well, it's peaking up again. It's a worry, I always see trash, so the police can just keep an eye out, you know, if they nab some of these people, and, and about it. It's not a good idea to do that. And the other thing is, cars parking on lawns, it's, again, it's becoming pretty rampant. We can have our police officers, you know, especially in the late hours of the night when they're not quite as busy, if they could go and take care of some of these lawns, cars on the lawns, I appreciate that. And again, have a happy 4th, come enjoy the parade, and let's get on to business.
Resolution number 2525-18.
A resolution requesting the county auditor to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies for the year 2018 collected in 2019 pursuant to section number 321.34 of the Revised Code of the State of Ohio declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Resolution, can I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Louhardi? Call the roll.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Motion for third and final, by Mezek, second by Saunders.
The county auditor collects the real estate taxes, when we talk about this is in January of 2019. As they're collecting it, we ask that they advance the funds as they collect it versus waiting to the final settlement in June, that we could pay bill as we go throughout the year. So I'm asking Consul to approve this to allow them to advance taxes as they collect them.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9614-18. Adopting the City of Bedford Law Enforcement Trust Fund Internal Control Expenditure Policy to Conform With the Requirements of the Ohio Revised Code to Clarify Procedures and Declaring an Emergency. Motion for suspension by Louhardi, second by Spinks. Call the roll.
Rhodes? Yes. Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mezek? Yes. Louhardi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, by Mezek, second by Rhodes.
I think this one's good. In regards to the higher revised code, our auditors came in and noticed that we had to have a policy, it's kind of new to all the cities, that in line with the law enforcement trust fund, we have to identify the policies and controls that we have around funds, and how we get the funds, what, how we spend funds, and then identify how we're, what we're going to allow the expenditures to be spent for. And the higher revised, very, higher revised code's very clear on what you can do with those funds. However, they allow exceptions in that manner for legislative authority to act on that to change or modify the policy in any way to accept various ways of fighting for, for the drugs, you know, and so forth. So, in regards to this policy, we have our police dog, which wasn't mentioned in the new higher revised code, and as such, we would be utilizing these funds to help assist us in expenditures for the police dog, and aiding law enforcement, as Consul has passed that this evening.
It's like a 28-page.
Well, in reference to all our policies and procedures affecting spending money, so we have to address that, as well as address how this fund is funded.
Besides getting your rewards, you do a lot of writing.
Absolutely. A lot of policy.
Call the roll.
Rhodes?
necessary repairs at their cost, and actually upgrade the mixing system in that digester. The issue is, in order to do that, we needed to empty that large digester, and that is getting rid of roughly a hundred to a hundred and five thousand gallons of concentrated sludge. So, that's what we had to work through to do that. Use your imagination on how that works.
I'm sure glad there's somebody out there that does this. Any questions for Mike? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Saunders. Mike?
What we need to do is, there was a, an issue with the mixing system that was installed in our large digester, and the manufacturer and the installer will come in and make the necessary repairs at their cost, and actually upgrade the mixing system in that digester. The issue is, in order to do that, we needed to empty that large digester, and that is getting rid of roughly a hundred to a hundred and five thousand gallons of concentrated sludge. So, that's what we had to work through to do that. Use your imagination on how that works.
I'm sure glad there's somebody out there that does this. Any questions for Mike? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Our service department identified a sinkhole in the parking lot of the Sunoco at Union and Northfield, sometime last year. We actually went out, we did a formal bid to replace the line which actually runs from Northfield Road back through the parking lot, and it's a storm, and it discharges down into the creek. The bids came in very, very high, roughly six figures. We went back, knowing that the entire line didn't need to get repaired, to try to limit the cost. We went out, and we have received quotes to dig up that specific area, make the spot repair at a much more reasonable cost, and the two quotes that came in, one was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and northeast Ohio Trench came in at twenty-one thousand nine hundred and five. Just from the time we identified it last year, it has grown significantly. It's to the, could probably fit a small car in this sinkhole. We want to move to get this repaired as quickly as possible as it continues to erode in the parking lot. It'll, the direction it's headed will approach, if we do nothing, it will get closer and closer to the tanks, and we want to address it before we get to that area.
Definitely. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Call the roll, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Our service department identified a sinkhole in the parking lot of the Sunoco at Union and Northfield sometime last year. We actually went out, we did a formal bid to replace the line which actually runs from Northfield Road back through the parking lot, and it's a storm, and it discharges down into the creek. The bids came in very, very high, roughly six figures. We went back, knowing that the entire line didn't need to get repaired, to try to limit the cost. We went out, and we have received quotes to dig up that specific area, make the spot repair at a much more reasonable cost, and the two quotes that came in, one was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and northeast Ohio Trench came in at twenty-one thousand nine hundred and five. Just from the time we identified it last year, it has grown significantly. It's to the, could probably fit a small car in this sinkhole. We want to move to get this repaired as quickly as possible as it continues to erode in the parking lot. It'll, the direction it's headed will approach, if we do nothing, it will get closer and closer to the tanks, and we want to address it before we get to that area.
Definitely. Questions? Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
It's just, the state legislature has took control of, well, they're trying to take control of small cell wireless facilities and wireless support structures. This is a, but they are allowing cities to enact guidelines and laws to protect their interests, and this is our attempt to control, retain some home rule over the use of small cell wireless facilities and wireless support structures. If you don't adopt these rules or these ordinances, then the state law controls, so this gives the city more control over future construction of these facilities.
And the reason it's kind of a big deal is, they talk about small cell equipment. The average size is twenty-eight cubic feet, the size of your refrigerator, that they're going to hang on poles all over town. So, that's why it's pretty important to regulate them, and the state really limits us to how we can regulate them. So, we're doing the best we can with what we got to try to regulate them, but these things are big. Imagine just hanging a refrigerator on a pole out in front of your house, and they're trying to treat it like it's a small cell, and it's a little bit, it's a little, they're huge. So, hopefully, technology will bring them down to where they're reasonable size, but for now, we've got to deal with them, and the state says we have to, so call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Frank?
Yeah, this is to adjust our budget for the year 2018. We had some savings that we were looking at in dispatcher, about sixty-five thousand dollars, reducing the budget there, reducing the funds transferred out for police, and the timing of our officers. Also, we're going to be increasing our budget in regards to our lack of revenue coming in from U.S. Bank for five months, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the closing of that. Our seal fund, we had confiscated funds, another twenty thousand. We had a lot of small changes in many grants that we applied for, and some donations that we received. And finally, in this ordinance, we have a police card that's being purchased, net of our insurance reimbursement, that we asked council to approve today, so we can get those on that card.
And just aside to that, you mentioned U.S. Bank closing. It's not the bank in the middle of town. It's the U.S. Bank Mortgage Division at Rockside and Northfield, where, you know, you can't even see it, it's back in the woods, and if you go over the bridge heading to Maple Heights, and you look off to the left, you can just barely see the roof, so... But two hundred and sixty jobs, two hundred and eighty jobs we're losing. Horrible, horrible thing. But I've heard rumors about all the banks closing in the middle of town. No, not that U.S. Bank. Anyhow, back to the editorial. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Yes, this property alone, the next one, I mean, they're both in very poor shape. This property's been vacant for some time as the resident deceased, she likes to go ahead and inspect the process and do what we need to do, and then have to try to get it cleaned up.
Thank you, and I think the board one councilperson would be happy to have that done. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Absolutely, yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizak. Again, it's the same thing, and councilwoman, I believe, concurs?
Absolutely.
Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizak. Again, it's the same thing, and councilwoman, I believe, concurs?
Absolutely.
Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. As you recall, we had our engineer and our service department go out and do a street assessment earlier in the year. They came back with, you know, where we were at, knowing what we were looking at to have budgeted for the tax increase. We did want to put together a road program, one that we're going to do year in and year out, going forward, and we are starting with the worst of the worst. Some of these streets that we'll be doing, and we're going to do roughly, I believe, it's eight of them, some of them haven't been repaid since, like, ninety, ninety-one. That is a long time. In addition to that, we did put in the bid. We bid out crack ceiling work for Rockside as well as Columbus. We did that to get the lowest price possible, while at the same time in January, if you recall, we made an announcement that we got a twenty-five thousand dollar grant for materials for crack ceiling, and we received that grant from the county, so we're utilizing this to tie that into the road program, we'll get the lowest cost possible, and that's included in this bid, along with chip and seal of the cemetery road, which we budgeted separately. The reason we didn't just go ahead and award a separate contract, the price would go up. So, we combined that with the streets, like I said, I think there's roughly eight of them, and we'll be back at it next year, and it'll be year after year, it'll take us a little while to get caught up. What we're going to be looking at after, after this, the crews will be going out, and we haven't necessarily mapped out entirely what areas, but, you know, sidewalks that have been damaged due to tree lawn trees lifted, we're going to be going out and marking those and starting our sidewalk program this year as well, so we'll get that going as soon as possible.
Thank you. Yes.
I've got two comments on that. First, on the sidewalks. Will this include the sidewalks that the ash trees have already been removed? They're not there anymore, there's still quite a few sidewalks that were lifted because of those trees, and those trees are long gone.
Yeah, we'll be able to identify those, because the roots obviously were just, weren't removed under the walk, or else the walk would be gone, so we'll be able to identify those.
Okay, that was one question residents had. The other one, of course, is, we're going to have a few angry residents on Nordham, because that street hasn't been worked on in decades. That street is in very poor shape, and I hope our service department keeps on top of it, because some of those craters that open up over there are huge. That road really, it may get to the point with another winter where we can't even resurface it anymore, we may have to replace it, so just to bring that point up.
Thank you, yes.
I have a question in regards to this ordinance also, to the city manager. Lee Road, southwards north and south, I believe I was more concerned with the northeast side going towards your outside, up to Granite Avenue, from Trinity Road to Granite. Will that be the one that they're going to be working on?
This Lee Road is, this is our entire portion that is in Bedford. The portion that's in Maple Heights is their responsibility. They did get a grant. I don't believe they're resurfacing, I believe they're just patching crack ceilings and doing that for their portion, but the...
My part will be, like I said, Lee Road to Granite.
The area in Bedford is covered. That's, that's this, yes.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for ninety-six twenty-three dash eighteen.
Amending chapter three fifty-one entitled Parking Generally of our Codified Ordinances by Enacting New Section three fifty-one twenty-one entitled Waiver of Parking Violations and Declaring an Emergency.
And again, we want to put that on first reading, further study. Motion by Mizak, second by Rhodes. Call, call, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Lohrdi?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And then, we need a motion to accept the planning commission recommendation of June nineteen twenty eighteen for Charles Biller, architect, Cleveland Heights, representing Gus Campan Tarris, owner of Chris's Restaurant at eighty-four Broadway Avenue, is proposing to construct a ninety-six square foot addition on the south end to enclose a new walk-in cooler. Have a motion for, if you vote yes, you agree with the planning commission to accept it. If you vote no, you're voting against the planning commission, so have a motion for[1648.91] for approval by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
MIZAC?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
And, uh, before we get into hearing of citizens, I just wanna welcome a distinguished guest in the audience, a Harvard councilperson, Marilyn Zalata. So good to see you here.
Good to see all of you.
Did you have anything to say?
Can I say it?
Yeah, you gotta say it. I'll let you go first.
Your chairs opened. Your chairs opened. Thank you, as the mayor said, very nice to see everybody at work. First of all, happy birthday to everybody. It's gonna be a very, very nice, uh, day, and I understand, very hot. Uh, I wanted to come tonight, I should've been here sooner, to publicly thank the city and the administration for the honor that was bestowed upon me and my husband. At the end of Carroll Drive, Broadway and Mitchell, I'm sure most of you go by there three times a week. The city has erected a park in our honor and the Tbersky family who donated the lot, and it was dedicated a couple of weeks ago, and most of these people were there, and it did not cost taxpayers dollars, I might add. The lot was donated by Walter Tbersky, who was a realtor, uh, that he passed away at an older age, of course, but he donated the lot. His family came to us and asked us if we wanted to purchase the lot. Well, Mike and I discussed it, and we decided we didn't need a lot, that nothing could be done with, you couldn't build on it, which is why he didn't do anything with it. So, Mike said, "Well, maybe, maybe they'll donate it." I don't know if he put a bug in their ear or what, but whatever happened, uh, they donated the lot. Uh, the other things that were done to the lot, the landscaping, benches, plaques, whatever, were donated, were, um, as a result of a, uh, excess grant that we had, funds that were left in the grant, and the funds were to be used for green space or outdoor space that the city could, residents could enjoy, and that's exactly what this is. But the honor was, there's two plaques. One plaque is for the Tbersky family, the other plaque is for me and my husband. My husband was on console in the late, middle eighties, middle eighties, and I was on console until last December, and, uh, I say it's an honor, it's an honor to us, to me, and I'm sure he would feel the same if he were here. It was an honor to serve the people of this city. I'll always appreciate the kindness and what everybody has done for me, each and every one of you out there, plus many others. Vic has been wonderful, he's been coming to visit me, telling me what's going on, keeping me abreast, so I appreciate everything everybody's done, but if you get a chance, stop and see the little park, and it's beautiful, it, uh, beautifies the city, and I'm so happy to have received that honor from the good people that I worked with for a long time, and thank you again.
You're quite welcome, and you deserve it. And hearing of citizens, uh, if you wish to speak, come forward, state your name, address, and your comment.
Getting to know you, getting to know about you has been very challenging. I must say that, but I love you all. I'm rubbing the panel, I'm gonna paint these butts, and my home office is five-eighty Northfield Road, here in Bedford, and it has been interesting getting to know you all, and I wanted to, first of all, come and say happy Fourth of July to everybody, and I wanted to resound and reiterate that I am a congressional candidate for two thousand and eighteen, because I'd like to, um, restore and engage peace and unity in the community. I like to empower us, we've come to a place in life and season where there's more people, so there's more responsibility, and there are great things happening, but there are things that must be addressed, that are still not being addressed, and I wanna thank you, Councilman Saunders, with, through the, uh, Council President, for encouraging me to do what's right, so that other residents would have a decent place to live. I don't know how much longer I'll be with you all in Bedford, but it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you, and Mayor Coche and Mrs. Coche, I do apologize for this two-thirty, two-thirty call, I didn't know your phone was connected to your home, and I would never do that to you again. But I wanted to also, oh, and I am a candidate for the eleventh district of Ohio, which is inclusive of Bedford, Bedford Heights, Orangeville Heights, Shaker Heights, and many others, but not limited to those, and I have an entity called Praise and Worship in the Park that I have been having in the city of Cleveland, and you're welcome to join with Mayor Jackson and his administration on fulfilling that vision, to have some pleasure and a place of praise and worship for people come to here, people who live here, to just enjoy just some praise and worship in the park. And I'm also working with Mayor Frank G. Jackson's wife, Ed Wanda Jackson, on the entity called Peace in the Park. You're welcome to participate in that. My phone number, if anybody needs to reach me, is one-two-one-six-five-four-eight-zero-eight-two-zero, and Mayor Coche, whenever I do leave Bedford, I have labeled you as my friend across this country, and I do believe you to be my friend, and if there's been any misunderstanding of anything I've done with you all, just forgive me. I have no intention of doing any harm to anybody, that's never my dream or my ambition or my goal or my desire for anyone to ever be damaged as a result of my walk or anything that I say. God bless you, and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to address the council while lighting up First Avenue.
Excuse me, can you, is David, address?
My name is David J. Presby. I live at forty-three First Avenue. I lived at, on that street since nineteen fifty-four. Since then, three street lights have been taken out. It's get, it's not like the old days, which you could just leave your house unlocked, no problems. Last week alone, we had two leisure fights that late night. I could not even distinguish people out on the street, I had to walk outside to see. After that, I went inside, by the time the police arrived, they already scattered, because they seen the headlights coming. I was not able to get signatures from all the people on First Avenue. Here's a majority of them, that's, they do work for light and spam, would you like the full stack copy or the original?
Do you wanna work?
There's three houses on this, and two houses revert, refused to sign, and that was off, that was out of twenty-eight houses. Two of the poles, you can still see the holes where the bolts were that had the lights up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one of my neighbors wa, told me, if I walked any farther out in my yard, I would've been right in the middle of the fight, 'cause it was in front of my house, and I don't even know who they were. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, President, do you check that out?
Good evening, my name is Sarah Ginnati, I'm speaking on behalf of the Southeast Branch Library in Bedford. I know I come up here every month, so I try to showcase some of the things we're doing, and I would say it's, you know, it's really great, but it keeps getting better. So, uh, just to remind everyone that we are part of the Greater Cleveland Food Bank as a site for serving summer lunches for youth eighteen and younger from eleven forty-five to twelve-thirty, Monday through Friday. We have a really great presentation coming up this Saturday at two o'clock, presented by the County Department of Consumer Affairs, that is called "Scams that Target Seniors." It will go over new scam trends and how you can avoid them, so that would probably be a really good program. We are also collaborating with the Bedford City Schools in their summer reading program, and we are a scholastic STEM staff, so every Tuesdays, including tomorrow, um, every Tuesdays at four o'clock, we do enrichment activities that are extensions of the reading that they'll be doing this summer for school, and that's for grades K to six. We also have our Saturdays Music and Movement, Shake It Up Saturdays at two o'clock. We have a Saturday STEM program on Saturday, July twenty-first, working, continuing our monthly, uh, teen programs with our Make and Take Makerspace, where we'll be doing solar cooking, hopefully it'll be a nice hot day, um, and we'll also be working with our volunteers, which is our teen volunteers. If you've noticed, we've been working on the outside of the library and making it very pretty and resurrecting the butterfly garden, um, so, um, special kudos, we'll make sure we acknowledge, uh, the Bedford Garden Club, who gave us a lot of those plants and flowers. And then we also have, coming Friday, July thirteenth, we're, uh, bringing back the Word one-on-one basics, so Microsoft Word Class, and if you're really good at Word, or you think you're good at Word, we also have the Microsoft Word four-on-one this month, which is for, uh, intermediate to advanced users. So we have everything going on this month, even though it seems like it's summer, we're, uh, we're cooking at the library, and, um, if you need anything, come see me, I'll be here at the end. And on a personal note, because you only have one meeting a month, I don't like to be Sarah the resident and Sarah the library at the same time, but I do wanna let you know, I wasn't sure if you received notice, but, uh, this Fourth of July, I have resigned from the city of Bedford volunteering, and will be watching the parade for the first time in twenty-seven years.
How are we gonna have the parade?
Well, Tigger will be in the parade, we found a replacement, it will not be me, so I, don't hug her, well, you can, you can hug them, but it's not me. But yes, it'll be the first time, I'm looking forward to watching it. Um, my son said I wasn't allowed to be in the parade this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, and for your service in doing that all those years.
It really was hard.
Especially this week in, uh, post-ninety, uh, yeah.
I picked the bill with the lead on.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much for that. Anyone else? Hearing none, have a motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
MIZAC?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.